More housing and more hope.
Well, we're here kicking off a launch of $100 million campaign to build the Father Gregory Boyle Center for Radical Kinship and Hope Village. And what that means is there's going to be a place where people can get mental health services, a place to live, job training, get the wraparound services, and critically, the love and support they need to change their lives.
So we're in the shade of Men's Central Jail, which we hope they'll eventually tear down to make way for this project. So we're celebrating Frank McCourt has given us $10 million to launch this $100 million campaign. We're hopeful that if we imagine something like this, we can all roll up our sleeves and make it happen.
Frank McCourt is coming together, Homeboy Industries are coming together to tell people that they do have a second chance. That this is not their only chance. Today is Mental Health Day, and so we're reminding folks about what this expansion is about, that people are out there to heal, people are out there to care, and that's what this is about. And so that investment is an investment into the future of Homeboy Industries.
This isn't just about kind of expanding us. It's about inviting us to imagine and that we will leave nobody behind.
You can't get well in a cell. You just can't. There's no example of that. This new Father Gregory Boyle Center for Radical Kinship and Hope Village become a model for the whole country and the world. Because every community deserves this kind of space that believes in people enough to invest in them time and time again. Thank you.
It's a hot topic. Councilmember Kitty Yaroslavsky joined LA Civil Rights and Community Members to learn more about policymaking on menopause. They heard what other cities have put in place and how LA can catch up.
The city has done some incredible work on behalf of women. These benefits really reflect the city's acknowledgement of what our bodies and our minds go through.
We're here at Lacey this morning to talk about perimenopause, which is incredibly important to half the population of people, right? Perimenopause is something that doesn't announce itself in the same way other parts of one's life do. And the changes that women go through when they hit often their 40s through to their 60s are significant and have been underemphasized for a really long time. So it's really important that we bring together experts to help figure out how the City of Los Angeles can do a better job of supporting women who are going through perimenopause.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the work that City of Melbourne is doing.
It's just so important for all women who are going through menopause and perimenopause. We need awareness and we need to talk to each other about what we're experiencing and what we can do to push toward legislation to try to make everyone aware and give more protection.
It's a subject that has not talked about, yet half of the world's population experiences it. And we don't really talk about it. We don't study it. We certainly don't view it as an issue that should be addressed publicly or collectively.
The LA Civil Rights Department, in partnership with our Commission on the Status of Women, wants to be intentional to meet the needs of all community members. When we say LA is for everyone, we mean women who are dealing with menopause.
Well, one thing I think that will come out of the roundtable today is there is an economic cost that you will experience from this.
It has economic value to provide this type of care. It's not just like a nice thing to do, but there's an economic rationale here on top of that.
We want to find out the best practices of how to support women going through menopause. We want to let people know that learning about menopause in your 40s and 50s could actually extend your quality of life and reduce medical costs and, of course, extend your actual life cycles.
School principals based in the city gathered to learn more about how they can connect with city services. These supports will serve the principals in operating their schools and, of course, helping their students.
We're here at LA Trade Tech, meeting with principals locally to the area, from elementary to high school. We're going to talk about all the city services that we offer. So there's a lot of key organizations that are going to be offering resources today. All Peoples Community Center, Department of Sanitation, Department of Water and Power, LAPD. A lot of principals have been asking us, hey, Jose, how do we get in contact with the local officer? Hey, how do we get in contact with the local sanitation crew? So today, we got them all together to make sure that those questions are answered. It's really important that we connect with our local schools because a lot of insecurities going on with the administration right now, with funding and public safety. We wanted to make sure that the local schools got to know who the city council member is, who local departments are, because eventually we all have to work together.
This gathering today is so sanitation can give out more information on illegal dumping and homeless encampments. So we want to make sure that they have all the information and know the steps on how to report. They can go onto MyLA or even the LA sanitation website.
Getting all the resources today is pivotal to maintaining quality programming within our city, especially our District 9. That's where our school is located. And so I'm just excited to be here to get all this valuable information and take it back to my community. Share it and do something about it, too.
Small Business and Entrepreneur Financing Program. Latino Historic Places will be marked by LA City Planning and Councilmember Unises Hernandez offers support for renters. These stories up next on City Beat.
Mayor Karen Bass encourages local small business owners and entrepreneurs to apply for the city's contract financing program. The program provides an opportunity for local small businesses to better understand the steps needed to be a city contractor. Through the partnership with Bank of California, $1 million in funding was provided to establish and facilitate the program. With this initiative, small business owners can secure competitive loans to help fund materials and equipment. For more information, go to mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Los Angeles City Planning's Office of Historic Resources is announcing the launch of Historic Places LA Revealed Latino Los Angeles. The Office of Historic Resources is looking to select sites that reflect the Latino community and heritage around Los Angeles. Markers will be installed at over 100 sites, creating the opportunity for community engagement at these historic places. An online survey is available for Angelenos to share locations they believe hold Latino heritage that should be recognized. For more information, visit Planning for LA on Facebook or Instagram. Councilmember Unises Hernandez announced new data showing evictions in her district have declined, dropping 10% in the last two years. Citing a new precedent for citywide accountability, Hernandez has secured the first ever administrative citation against an abusive landlord. The Highland Park landlord was fined for violations that included unauthorized entries, false permit filings, and armed guards sent to intimidate families. Hernandez said that her office has distributed more than $100,000 in rental assistance in the past year, and staff are dedicated to helping tenants with eviction notices. For more information, visit the Press Releases tab at cd1.lacity.gov.
Now, in its eighth year, the annual Reseda Rising Art Walk uses Sherman Way as a backdrop for performances and art. A nighttime stroll reveals dancers and interactive art lighting up the neighborhood. Let's take a look.
Well, today is the Reseda Rising Art Walk. It's an annual festival. We started a number of years ago. It's our eighth time doing it, and it's a place where we get to bring community together to celebrate Reseda and the artistic community that's here. It's to sort of lean into the art that is a part of the backbone of Reseda, where people are doing performances, painting, live interactive exhibits, music, food, concessions, all sorts of exciting, fun things for the family.
Well, bringing to the festival is to spend like time with my family, quality of time, and to see some other arts going around and, yeah, get to know new people, to new cultures.
Making my art is how I say I love you to the world. And when a bunch of other like-minded individuals can come out to our local community and do that, it's just a bunch of people saying I love you to each other, to everybody, and that works for me.
That's why we're here at Reseda Rising, to celebrate community. Reseda has been my home since eight years old. My brother went to high school here, and my mom lives down the street. So it's just great to be outside and see, you know, my community and our common thread of art and creativity.
It's good to bond with the family, to walk, and to know what is around here, you know? They have shown new projects that are going to be around, too, so I like that.
Art events like these are important because otherwise, there's Etsy, there's Shopify, but those are kind of dispassionate. But, you know, here, when I come out to these events, I see people that I know, people that maybe I haven't seen for a while. It's like, hey, you know, actually, just the booth across from me is someone that I know that I haven't seen for a good while, and it allows for reconnecting, especially after several years of not being able to connect with people.
It's music and arts here at the Art Walk, but really, it's all about economic development. It's about taking this area and giving it the support that it needs and to invest in Reseda and to transform it to not just be what it was before, but to be something new and special and really great for Reseda. And we are seeing that unfold in front of us through this festival, but through all the investments. And Reseda is rising.
Would you dare go into the water? Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez hosted a celebration at Hanson Dam for the 50th anniversary of Jaws, the movie that dug its teeth into audiences and never let go.
Today, we're here at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, where we are screening and celebrating the 50th anniversary of the release of Jaws. That movie was so iconic for so many of us growing up. It's kind of fun to bring it back and commemorate the first screening that I had here at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, which was Jaws back in 2018.
We have foot trucks. We have a DJ. We have so many activities in the water. We have the water slide, and it's a free event.
With so many families struggling financially, these are opportunities that allow families to come together with their neighbors, and we get thousands of people that come out. It's not just the movie. It's using one of our community amenities and really having a wonderful time, making memories that will last a lifetime. So I'm really happy that we're able to offer these types of events that bring families together, that are in our own neighborhoods. They can do it right here in their own backyard.
This is like the best pool because it's one of the biggest pools like in LA area. It has so much space. It could accommodate so many people. I just really like this pool.
So it was a really good summer. People came in, they feel safe. The lifecars, like these two right here and everybody else, they do an amazing job making sure that everybody's safe in and out of the water. Right here in CD7, we do our best to provide an excellent service to the community, working together in a partnership. We counsel District 7, Monica Rodriguez. So our job is to make sure to provide different opportunities for the public to enjoy.
We go to great lengths to try and help create environments that will help leave positive and happy memories for you and your family at zero cost. Because we want to make sure that as difficult as times are, that you still have those moments that no one can take from you. And that's what these events are all about.
And that looked like a Jaws event. A welcome for wisdom. LA's Department of Aging and the Sparks Basketball Team continue their outreach program for seniors in the community. It's all about keeping your balance in life and on the dance floor.
So we're currently at Felicia Mahood Multipurpose Center. Today, we partnered up with the LA Sparks.
You're going to flex and just do a quick little arm, okay?
They came out and were doing exercises with the seniors. They're really active with them, really engaging. We had Sparky, the mascot, come out. It was a lot of fun. We had a great time kind of getting them up and active, and it was a great event.
We enjoy giving back to the community.
Up! Good job. Come back down.
Seeing the smiles that come with it. We always try to bring our mascot out to the community, and so he always gets a few laughs. But the biggest thing is just making sure that everybody feels warmed and welcome. A lot of times, as you get older, you feel like you're forgotten. And we wanted to make sure that they felt like they were still very relevant and that we were wanting to get some wisdom from them, along with bringing them some joy and some laughter and a different experience that they're not used to receiving.
Keeping our seniors moving is so vital, so important to our department, the Department of Aging, because we want our seniors to not just go through the day-by-day routine, but to really thrive. A lot of our senior centers, they offer that. So whether it's learning a new skill, engaging in a new program, or learning about technology, computers, they can do just that. And then with exercise especially, it's so important that we move and that we have that physical mobility.
We want to make sure that we don't fall. A lot of this is, you know, keeping your balance and not being able to fall. Because you fall, you're out of luck. And something can break, and you could just end up being horrible. So this has been a really fun time. All instructors here are really good and all different. Just different to see different people do different things. And, you know, you do different things, and so it's fun. And a lot of it is sitting, some of standing. So, you know, you get the whole gamut.
They led us in some great exercises, worked up the sweat, played some bingo, and just had a great time today.
They're able to really just kind of fellowship and be around others, engage, socialize. Because we really want to make sure we do our best to decrease social isolation. They don't have to get plugged and involved to every single thing. We don't want to overwork them or anything like that. But they can really engage in as little or as much as they like. So if they want to come twice a week and have a ball, they can. If they want to be here every single day and just sit back and observe, they can. There is a place and space for them, yeah.
It is so vital for our community, especially for this age range and demographics that we serve. Sometimes we might be the only meal that the seniors are eating with us, or we are their only source of community and engagement and family. And so I see it on their faces on a daily basis. Just it's something that is very important to them.
No discord here. Each year, the Watts Towers Jazz Festival continues to bring harmony and joy to the local community. Step up to enjoy all the sounds of the festival.
We're the oldest of their kind, these festivals, and it is so important that these festivals continue to be produced in the Watts community.
What we are doing today is the 48th Annual Simon Ordia Watts Towers Jazz Festival. And I have been the master of ceremonies or co-master of ceremonies for the last 21 years. And it's a magnificent event for the community because it's in the community where it's supposed to be for people who live here and people who live around here.
Just the fact that it's here, people can come out, sit, and listen to music. They can walk the grounds and see various cultural shops, and they have their food. And then they got a free area where they dance, and they have the drummers doing free drumming and stuff like that. I mean, it's like a breath of fresh air, you know? It's like something that the community needs, you know? And we look forward to this being here for another 48 years, you know? It's been a beautiful thing.
You know, to be honest, I've often heard it said that jazz is dead, but I have to say that being here today proves that that statement is a lie. Jazz is very much alive and well, and the youth of today and hopefully the youth of tomorrow will continue to push the art form forward.
Truly a blessing and great thing for us to be here in 2025. It's always good when you can serve your community. And, you know, we go all over the world doing concerts, but it's a whole different thing when we're at home.
We'd also like to invite you to next year. We're always the last weekend in September. You can come here, and we got you. We love you and are waiting for you, so come see us.
In this week's feature story, our Maria Holbrown is in conversation with Steve Kang. As leader of the Board of Public Works, Kang is involved with all aspects of infrastructure in the city, from the day-to-day to the Olympic-sized challenges ahead.
For someone who's not familiar, the Board of Public Works impacts a swath of the city. What are some of the areas that the commission actually has oversight on?
Sure, we're a five-member body, all appointed by the mayor with confirmation by the city council. What makes us so unique is that we're all full-time. We're the only full-time commission body in the city. We meet three times a week, similar to city council, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So we hold over 150 public meetings. And the role of the board is really to provide that oversight, transparency, public accountability, and that governance to five of the most critical infrastructure or building blocks of our city. So we oversee the Bureau of Sanitation, Lights, Streets, Contracts, and Engineering that basically works on pretty much all the public right-of-ways, from your streets to your sidewalks, to your trees, to your sewers, to new construction projects, and then leading up to the Olympics as well. Right now, we're in sort of that growing pains phase, where you're seeing a lot of construction in different parts of town, but you're not seeing those headlines, and you're not seeing sort of the final ribbon-cutting projects that are coming to life. So for example, there's a brand-new Purple Line that's been an underground metro project that is partnership with the city, that connecting from the Wilton Theater in Koreatown, Woolshire and Western to UCLA. So which stops, once that's open, way before the Olympics, that's an 18-minute one-way. Those things are going to be opening up. I know the People Mover System at LAX. There's going to be other underground construction projects. And also, many of the sidewalks and the trees and the streets are now being prepped for the Games ahead of time. Most recently, the Board of Public Works also approved the construction contract for the LA Convention Center Expansion and Modernization Project. So that is a very robust project that will expand the size of the convention center. We felt that the urgency of the moment in terms of revitalizing downtown LA to where it needs to be could not wait another three years. So yes, there has been some delays, unfortunately, because of the fires and recently the ICE raids. Those things are not helping to move projects along. And I know there are concerns about the budget and cost overrun, but I have hope and I have firm belief that when we have a firm deadline, and we do have a firm deadline because we can't push back the Olympics. So our staff and our construction partners and our labor partners are well aware of that timeline. We can get it done on time.
In this week's Things to Do, celebrate for the nine days running up to Dia de los Muertos. Make a splash at the renovated Verdugo Hills Pool and enjoy a pumpkin patch festival. All this up next on Things to Do.
The Olvera Street Merchants Association Foundation invites Angelenos to the Day of the Dead, beginning on Saturday, October 25. The nine-night celebration is a time to remember and honor our loved ones who have passed on. Day of the Dead at Olvera Street is the only celebration of its kind in Los Angeles, with nightly processions, community altars, and entertainment. Bring the family and head down to El Pueblo to celebrate Day of the Dead, starting Saturday, October 25 through Sunday, November 2, from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. For more information, visit olveraevents.com. Councilmember Monica Rodriguez invites Angelenos to the Verdugo Hills Pool reopening on Saturday, October 25, from 10 a.m. Verdugo Hills Pool is conveniently located in Tahanga and offers a variety of programs like lap training and aquatic classes. So grab your bathing suit and your swimming trunks and head out to Verdugo Hills Pool reopening on Saturday, October 25, starting at 10 a.m. For more information, visit the Events tab at cd7.lacity.gov. It's that time of year for witches and warlocks to appear. Councilmember Unises Hernandez and the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks invites you to their Free Pumpkin Patch Festival on Saturday, October 25, from 12 p.m. to 4 p.m. So gather your little ghouls and goblins and head on down to Rio de los Angeles State Park at North San Fernando Road. Enjoy music, arts and crafts, face painting, and much more. Come to the Pumpkin Patch Festival, Saturday, October 25, starting at 12 p.m. to 4 p.m. For more information, visit the Calendar tab at cd1.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at LA this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA this week.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm director of the Watts Towers Art Center campus. Come visit the Watts Towers Art Center campus, where you'll see exhibitions, the Watts Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watts Towers are truly unique and receive Cultural Heritage Monument status from the City of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watts Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watts Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watts Towers. It provides programs designed for cultural enrichment and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adoption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watts Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
The National Placid Institute, they're here, they're on the right-hand side. It's a group of women and men.
Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 22nd day of October, the year 2025. Public comment for this morning's meeting will be taken in person in this chamber. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Blumenfeld, Harris, Thompson, Hernandez, Hurt, Hurado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, eleven members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of October 21st, 2025.
Councilmember Park moves, Councilmember Nazarian seconds. What's next?
Committer resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Soto Martinez moves, Councilmember McCosker seconds. Can we run through our agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. The Government Operations Committee report for item 13 has been submitted and uploaded to council file number 22-1545-S35. Items one through thirteen are items for which public hearings have been held. Items fourteen through thirty-two are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, any specials members, Mr. McCosker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call item number four special. It had a public hearing below, but I want to call it, I may have comments on it, I would like to have the vote be after public comment, so that members of the public who are here to speak to it can speak, and I think we'll also have a neighborhood council impact statement.
All right.
Thank you.
Folks, will we be able to speak on that item during general public comments? Councilmember Ramon?
I wanted to call items twenty and twenty-one special. Twenty, I want to hold for an amendment.
Two zero?
Two zero, I believe, I just want to clarify. Yes, item twenty, and just wanted to, if I could just take one moment to clarify why we need the amendment?
Sure.
So, colleagues, we heard this item in the Housing and Homelessness Committee last week. This is an extension to a contract for eviction defense and tenant support from ULA funds. The amendment adds additional funding to the extension to that contract, and I just wanted to say that this was because we were asked further along in the process than is usual to do an RFP here. That RFP is proceeding, but has hit potentially a little delay, and so just to make sure that services are provided uninterrupted, we're adding some money to this contract extension, and so if there's questions, I believe Housing Department will be here to answer them, but it's, you know, it's, I just wanted to make sure that people understood why this was happening right now, and it's due to just wanting to make sure that the services, tenant support, is not interrupted, so that's it. And Housing Department came back with some clarifications on what that would require after the meeting. And item twenty-one, I have comments.
All right, Mr. Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Asking for a separate vote for item twenty-two.
All right, two-two. Any other specials members? Councilmember Soto Martinez?
Yes, thank you so much, Council President. I have some comments for item twelve.
All right, one, two. Any other specials? All right, Mr. Clark, what items are available to vote on at this time?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item thirteen to Tuesday, October 28th, 2025.
All right, without objection, that'll be the order.
The council may now vote on items one through three, five through eleven.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item twelve, held on the desk for Councilmember Soto Martinez for comments.
We'll come to that after presentations, what's next?
The council may now proceed to presentation, sir.
All right, we have a couple great presentations this morning, but before we do those, I want to make sure we acknowledge L.A. Foster Youth Shadow Day. Everybody knows that all the members of, go ahead and stand up, National Foster Care Youth Institute is with us today. This is a national organization, and these are local members who are active in the organizations, who are involved in our foster care system. Today and tomorrow, all of us have been asked, or either us or someone on our team, will have a shadow from the Foster Care Institute that'll be with us and learn about what we do, but again, a very critical population to our community, and we want to make sure we recognize them at every single opportunity, so thank you all for being here. All right, next, we have a testimonial around the immigration raids. It is from Council District 13. Mr. Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you all to my colleagues for taking time from our very busy agendas to, I think, highlight something that's extremely important in the city of Los Angeles. Standing with me is Maria Gaetan, a mother and a constituent living in Glassell Park. A few months ago, her husband was taken by ICE, and now she's struggling to pay rent, manage everything at the household, and even with basic needs such as just affording groceries. Maria has been living in fear since the federal government tore her family apart, and she's here to tell us about her struggle. With Maria, to my right, is Griselda Samoyoa, whose 23-year-old daughter was taken by ICE at the Home Depot in my district by Hollywood and Western. Griselda has had to carry the impossible burden of going on with her life as her child has been ripped apart from her. I can't even imagine that pain that she must feel right now. So I want to thank both of them for joining us here today, and I'd like to invite Maria to share her testimony, followed by Griselda Samoyoa.
Hola. Buenas tardes, buenos dias, perdón si necesita servicio de traducción, los interpretes van a interpretar, si pueden pausar entre sus oraciones para permitir que los interpretes puedan traducir hacia el inglés, muchas gracias.
Mi nombre es Maria Gaetan.
My name is Maria Gaetan.
Mi esposo fue detenido el día seis de agosto de este año mientras iba a trabajar.
On the sixth of August of this year, while I was on my way to work, my husband was detained.
Ha sido muy difícil para mí, para nuestra familia, nuestros hijos. Aquí tengo tres hijos míos ahorita presentes, ha sido muy difícil agarrar dinero para la renta.
It's been very difficult for me and my three sons, who have also been, are also here, it has been very difficult for us to be able to pay our rent.
Los billes, la comida, las actividades físicas, que mis hijos les gusta salir mucho.
Our bills, our food, all the physical activities that my sons like to participate in.
Ya no es lo mismo, extrañan a su papá.
They miss their father very much.
Donde está detenido, es muy difícil estar ahí adentro, es muy frío, es helado, helado, no frío, es helado, no tienen cobijas.
When somebody is detained, it's so difficult, the conditions there are very cold, 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 they don't have any blankets.
La comida también a veces que está cruda o muy helada y no pueden comer, so les tenemos que mandar dinero para que compren sopa, sardinas, o arroz.
The food is often raw or cold, we often have to send money in order for them to eat.
Si se enferman, no les, no los atienden rápido, después les hablan como de dos a tres días para ver qué es lo que tenían, pero no, no los atienden rápido ahí.
They're not attended with efficiency or with, quickly enough in order for them to see what is available for them to eat.
Sé que va a ser muy difícil y lo es, pero seguimos adelante, pero quisiera, quisiéramos algo más, no sé qué, pero que hubiera como más abogados, más forma en ayudar a nosotros en forma de renta, no nomás a mí, a mi familia, pero a todos los que están pasando por esto.
I know it's gonna be very difficult.
Muchas personas no tienen, no tienen, como salir a trabajar.
I know it's gonna be very difficult moving forward, we're not sure how, but I believe that we need more assistance, whether it be legal assistance or other services in order to move forward.
Muchas personas no salen por la razón de que no tienen papeles, y la única persona que trabajaba pues está detenida.
A lot of people are not leaving their homes for fear of being detained because they don't have documents.
So si podrían ayudar más en forma de abogados?
So if we could get more assistance in the form of lawyers?
Y asistencia monetaria para las personas que no pueden pagar sus rentas.
And monetary assistance for those that cannot afford to pay their rents.
Pero también muchas personas no se llevan bien con los dueños o tienen miedo de que los dueños sepan de su situación, si podrían ayudarlos en otra forma para que no hablen directamente con los dueños de los apartamentos o las casas.
A lot of people are also scared to talk to their landlords, or don't have that relationship with their landlord, so if we could get some assistance in order to build some type of relationship with those landlords without having to engage with them directly.
Sí, bueno pues es todo y muchas gracias.
Well, that's all, thank you so much.
Buenos dias a todos, mi nombre es Magda Samoyoa, y quisiera compartirles un poco de lo que yo he vivido como madre.
Good morning to everyone, my name is Magda Samoyoa, and I would like to share with everyone through what I've had to live through.
Mi niña de 22 años salió lunes 30 de junio a su trabajo, y yo ya no la vi, ya no regresó a casa.
My 22-year-old daughter left home on Monday, June 30th, to go to work, and I haven't seen her anymore.
Fue hasta ese día en la noche que me dijeron que ella había sido detenida por ICE.
That night I was informed that she had been detained by ICE.
Ella estuvo tres meses detenida en Adelanto, California.
She was detained for three months in Adelanto, California.
Y reitero lo que, lo que dice aquí la compañera que las condiciones son inhumanas.
And I'm gonna repeat what my friend here said, the conditions that they're in are inhuman.
Y es duro, tanto para las que somos madres, para, para las que tenemos esposos, las que sufrimos todo lo que está pasando.
And it's hard, everything that we're going through, us, the moms, wives of our husbands, and everything that we're going through is just constant suffering.
Mi hija hace dos semanas fue deportada a mi país, yo soy de Guatemala, y ella llegó mal, llegó físicamente, emocionalmente, está mal, pero en medio de todo esto, yo agradezco de verdad a todas, a todas las personas que me apoyaron tanto en la alimentación como en lo económico. Como decía aquí la compañera, es muy difícil para las que, yo soy mamá soltera, tengo una niña de 15 años, y es muy duro, y si nos venimos para acá, este país es para tener una vida mejor.
Two weeks ago, my daughter was sent back to my home country, we're from Guatemala, and she arrived in a bad state, physically and mentally, it was just very bad, but, you know, despite all that, I want to say thanks to everyone who has helped me and our family with food and with money, you know, my coworkers and everybody. You know, I'm a single mom to a 15-year-old also, and, you know, those of us that are here, we came here in search of a better life.
Y eso es lo que quiero compartirles, y yo agradezco mucho la oportunidad que, que me dieron de poder yo compartir con ustedes, lo que nos pasa pues sí, y pedirle mucho a Dios para que pues esto se calme y que ya no hayan más separaciones de familia, muchas gracias.
And I want to thank everybody for the opportunity of allowing me to come here and share my story and let you know what's happening, you know, I want to pray, ask God to keep, calm things down and not have any more families be separated.
Thank you so much for that wonderful testimony, gracias por su testimonio. You know, I, if I speak personally, I really appreciate that we start, we've started these meetings every single time with the testimony, because we need to be reminded that this is not normal, that this is happening, and I know we're used to normalizing so many things, but we, this is one thing that we cannot normalize, and I think every single leader has a role to play here, but not just the folks here at the horseshoe, but there's, there's tens of thousands of workers in the city, and in this moment, we just have to have a position of not giving one single inch to this administration. We cannot allow this suffering, the tearing of families apart, the trauma, and so I thank you, Council President, and Councilmember Blumenfeld, who was your idea to begin with to continue doing this, and I know we're facing some difficult times, but I know we're gonna get past this, and we're gonna get past this because we're gonna be collaborative and build a community to fight against this terrible administration, so thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez, and thank you all both for coming and sharing your testimony with us this morning. And with that, we'll move on to our next presentation to be led by the mighty Councilmember McCosker of the One Five.
Mr. President and members, Councilmember Hugo Soto Martinez, thank you so much for the testimony. I appreciate so much the bravery of the folks who come and speak of their immigrant journey, and we are really living in a time where it's important for us to uplift those stories and to, as Mr. Soto Martinez says, not normalize what's happened today, but also uplift the stories of all of the cultures that come together and make Los Angeles what is Los Angeles, and make America what is America, and we yearn for the day where we can return to the welcome embrace of immigrants to this country. With that, colleagues, I say buongiorno a tutti, because today I'm honored to be here with the Italian Council General, Raffaella Valentini, a friend of ours who has been with us so many times, and Deputy Council General of Italy in Los Angeles, Lorenzo Riggi, how did I do, was that pretty good? Riggi. Thank you. I'm also joined by the Director of the Italian Trade Agency, Giacomette Reggano, as well as leadership from the Little Italy of Los Angeles Association right here. October is Italian-American Heritage Month, and it's a time to celebrate all things Italiano. Los Angeles' earliest Italian enclave was located just down the street from here, at the Los Angeles Plaza, and by the 1900s, the Italian community had expanded throughout the region, in Chinatown, Lincoln Heights, Elysian Park, and my favorite, in the harbor area of Los Angeles, they came for fishing and for fishing. They came for fishing and for shipbuilding and for all of the work that happens in and around the port. According to the Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles, more than 40,000 people of Italian descent live in the San Pedro area, making it the largest Italian community anywhere, anywhere in the region. And last weekend, we celebrated that. We celebrated it every day, of course. But last weekend, we celebrated that in the One Five with the annual Festa Italiana. And let me tell you, it was caybella. It was a beautiful event. It was the biggest one ever. It was fantastic. It drew gigantic crowds to downtown San Pedro. It was held in our Little Italy district on Sixth Street. It was an afternoon of fun, of entertainment, of great food, really great food, great music. We had vendors and we had folks that came from all over the region. And it went well into the evening, later than my bedtime. My fam, my entire extended family enjoyed it. San Pedro's Little Italy, which was brought to us by my predecessor, Joe Buscaino, who has sort of been the father of this idea, preserves the residents' Italian culture in our region. And pretty soon, very soon, right around the corner, we're going to be celebrating the grand opening of something called the Piazza Miramarre, which is this Italian-style piazza right in downtown San Pedro next to the City Council office. And the One Five and the Italian spirit are synonymous with each other, with many Italian-American families building their legacies on the One Five. They built their legacies and they built the legacy of our district. So, as we open this presentation, it is my honor to introduce you to the Council General of Italy in Los Angeles. She is always present in our community. She's always available to us. She's been a great friend to City Hall and a great supporter of the Italian-American community, Rafaela Valentini, for some remarks on this celebration. Rafaela.
Thank you, team. Dear President and members of the City Council, dear guests, dear all. It's a great honor to be here today at the Los Angeles City Hall celebrating Italian-American Heritage Month, an occasion to recognize the remarkable impact of the Italian-American community on this city and to reaffirm the deep and enduring ties between Italy and the United States. My heartfelt gratitude goes to the city of Los Angeles, in particular to my friend, Councilmember Tim McCosker, for his unwavering support of this celebration and his constant friendship toward our community. A special thanks also goes to the Little Italy of Los Angeles Association and its president Mario Amalfitano, as well as Vice President John De Girolamo, cultural ambassador Anna Manunza, and all board members. Together with the city of Los Angeles, Lila has been a key partner in keeping our heritage alive through community-driven initiatives that unite generations of Italians, Italian-Americans, and all friends of our beautiful country, Italy. I also wish to thank Los Angeles County and Supervisor Janice Hahn for proclaiming last October 14th, Italian Heritage Month in Los Angeles County. And I have to say that this year, our celebration takes on even greater meaning as the state of California, since last year, officially recognizes the month of October as Italian-American Heritage Month. This acknowledgement by the state, together with the city and the county of Los Angeles, is a testament of the strength and visibility of our community across not only Los Angeles, but across California. We are also deeply grateful to the Port of Los Angeles, which throughout the month of October has been illuminated with the colors of the Italian flag, the Tricolore, a powerful symbol of friendship, pride, and shared heritage between Italy and Los Angeles. As Tim McCosker was mentioning, earlier this month, on October 11, Lila organized the Festa Italiana in San Pedro, the cradle of Italian immigration to Los Angeles and home to the historic Little Italy since 2018, thanks to the vision of former Councilmember Joe Buscaino. This year's festa brought together around 50,000 participants, a tremendous success that shows how vibrant and united this community remains. San Pedro's story like that of many Italian-American communities is one of courage, hard work, and hope, where the dreams of the first Italian fishermen grew into families, businesses, and traditions that helped shape California and continue to thrive through their descendants today. Italy and the United States, dear President, dear Councilmembers, were both founded on the principles of freedom, democracy, and equality. It is through these shared values and through the contribution of generations of Italian-Americans that our friendship continues to thrive. The Consulate General of Italy in Los Angeles, together with all partners of the Sistema Italia, including the Italian Cultural Institute, the Italian Trade Agency, the Italian Chamber of Commerce West, will continue to work with you to strengthen this bridge between our nations and to keep alive the spirit that unites us. Count on us. Grazie.
Grazie, Council General. Thank you so much. The Little Italy of Los Angeles Association is really important in our community and it's a great bridge and as the Council General said, they've been the host of the Festa Italiana. They're also one of the hosts of the Gaelic and Garlic, which celebrates my culture and the Italian culture, coming soon to us all. I'm really honored today to have Anna Manunza, the Cultural Affairs Ambassador of the Little Italy of Los Angeles Association, to say a few words. Anna.
Good morning, Councilmembers. So as Councilmember McCosker mentioned, my name is Anna Manunza. I'm the proud Cultural Affairs Ambassador for the Little Italy of Los Angeles Association and I have the great honor of speaking to you today on behalf of Mario Amalfitano, our president. Mario couldn't be here today. He's currently in Italy with a small business delegation and he's been strengthening the ties between Los Angeles and Italy. And as he stands on the soil of our Italian ancestors, we gather here today to honor their legacy. So I wanted to share a little bit about me. I was born in, on the island of Sardinia in Italy and like many Italians before me, I chose to make Los Angeles my home. I came here for love first and foremost, opportunity, culture, and community. The same reasons our ancestors came here generations ago. So it's deeply personal and meaningful for me to stand here today and celebrate Italian-American Heritage Month in this great city. And now I would like to share a few words from our president, Mario Amalfitano. When our ancestors came to this country, they didn't ask for anything. They didn't expect anything. They came here with their hands, their hearts, and a deep love for America. They worked in the fields, on the docks, the sheepyards, the ocean, and in the factories. Whatever it took, they didn't complain. They never did. They just built. They brought with them skills from Italy that the world now calls common. They were maids'uns, tailors, chefs. Those, those skills came from generations of pride and perfection. They built with precision, cooked with love, and always, always prayed with faith. That's who they were and that's who we still are. It wasn't just the skills, it was the soul. Italians brought culture, cuisine, and faith. We brought family. We brought tradition. We made entire neighborhoods out of nothing and turned Sunday dinner into a sacred ritual. But somewhere along the way, it got quieter. Italians stopped standing as tall as they used to be and they used to here on the west coast. On the east coast, you still see it, parades, festivals, flags everywhere. They're waving proudly from porches, storefronts. But out here on the west coast, we've been too quiet for too long. It's time to stand proud again. It's time to remember that our story, the Italian-American story, is also part of the American story. We came here, we built, we sacrificed, and we never forgot where we came from, even while being discriminated against. We need to look forward now, have pride in who we are, teach the future generations to have pride in being Italian-American and hold their heads up high. And it's with great pride that we announced our piazza is almost complete. As Councilmember Tim McCosker mentioned, the Italian Piazza by the Sea, the very first Italian piazza in all of California, is just months away from opening. It's going to be a place that honors our ancestors, our culture, and our contributions to the city. We'll be hosting a ribbon-cutting ceremony and we wanted to personally invite all of you, every member of this council, to come and celebrate with us because this isn't just an Italian project, it's a Los Angeles story. And before I close, on behalf of Mario and all of us at Lila, I wanted to thank the people who made this all possible. Our Councilmember, Tim McCosker, for his unwavering support and for representing the largest Italian-American community in all of Southern California. Thank you, team. Our Italian delegates, the Consulate General of Italy and all the Italian institutions of Sistema Italia, who continue to stand by us and remind us that Italy and Los Angeles share a living connection. Our incredible Lila Board, all the board members, for dedication and heart. And our generous donors, among whom we count our godmother, Marisa Antonini, who believed in our vision. And lastly, Mario asked me to share this from his heart. I want to thank my father, Isidoro, who came to Los Angeles with nothing but hope and gave me everything. He's now my guardian angel and I carry his spirit with me every day. And I want to thank my mother, Rosaria, whose love, strength, and faith continue to guide me. She's the heart of our family and the reason I stand here, proud to be Italian-American. God bless you all. God bless Italy and God bless America. Grazie mille and thank you and happy Italian-American Heritage Month. Thank you. Grazie.
Well said, Anna. Thank you so much. I have a few things to give in closing unless there's any other speakers. As they are bringing this forward to me, I have a certificate. Oh, I have some flowers. I have flowers for Anna. By the way, Anna was awarded a knighthip by the Italian government just this past year, so let's hear it for Anna Manunza, who has a knight, which I can't say in Italian, and this is for you, Council General. And I do have a certificate right here. Oh, and we gave to Anna because, to acknowledge this very important recognition by the country. She is a Cavalliere dell'Ordine della Stella d'Italia. Perfecto? For Anna? And a beautiful certificate to our Council General for Italian Heritage Month. Thank you so much, everyone.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. McCosker, and thank you to our honorees this morning for recognition of Italian-American Heritage Day in the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Clerk, what is before us at this time?
Mr. President, the council may now consider item 12, call special by Councilmember Soto Martinez for comments.
All right, so item number 12, I want to ask the nominee to join us here at the table and then we'll begin our deliberation, the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Scobin's coming to the desk. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Scobin. Colleagues, we have before us an appointment of Jeffrey Scobin to serve on the Board of Police Commissioners, one of the most critical civilian oversight bodies in the city. The commission plays a vital role in ensuring that our police department operates with transparency, accountability, and a steadfast commitment to building trust with the communities it serves. As we work, as we continue to work towards a safer and more equitable Los Angeles, it is imperative that we have commissioners who approach this work with balance, integrity, and a deep respect for both community voices and public safety officers. Mr. Scobin exemplifies both of those values. I want to thank him for his willingness to serve and for stepping up to take on this demanding but essential position. Colleagues, I urge and I vote. Mr. Scobin, if you'd like to start with an opening statement.
Thank you and thank you all. My story is deeply tied to Los Angeles. I'm the son of an immigrant. My mother came to this country from Cuba at the age of 16, determined to build a better life. My wife's parents immigrated from Mexico in pursuit of that same dream. Growing up bilingual, I learned Spanish to communicate with my family and in doing so, I gained an understanding of how culture, language, and diversity are the threads that make up the fabric of LA. Both my parents have law enforcement experience. From them, I saw both the courage and the sacrifice that define public safety service. However, my perspective is not one-dimensional. As a teenager, I experienced biased policing firsthand. That experience made me believe, and still believe today, that true public safety cannot rest on enforcement alone. It must be built on fairness, accountability, and above all, trust. In my professional life, I serve as Vice President of Business Operations of Galpin Motors and serve on our executive team. I take this nomination seriously and I've spent a significant amount of time preparing myself. I've listened to community members, leaders, and business owners from diverse backgrounds about their concerns, hopes, and frustrations with policing in our city. I've spoken extensively with both sworn patrol officers and detectives, as well as civilian staff, to better understand their experiences and challenges better. I've gone on the first of what will be many ride-alongs to observe firsthand the day-to-day work of patrol and community issues they encounter. I've also reviewed a number of prior reports and evaluated department operations. Some preliminary observations and common themes that I've heard throughout. Staffing and recruiting challenges, immigration crisis, homelessness, budget pressures, use of force in oversight, community trust, implementing and investing in technology, and future demands with the Olympics and World Cups coming up, and in general, public safety. If confirmed, my approach as Commissioner will be grounded in three commitments. Listen first, to communities, to officers, to victims, and to those who feel unheard. Building trust through transparency, because legitimacy in policing depends on accountability and openness, and focusing on results, not just reducing numbers on a chart, but ensuring that families feel safe in their homes, childrens feel safe walking to school, and businesses feel secure in their neighborhoods. If you place your confidence in me, I will dedicate myself to this work. I know this role requires a commitment of time, judgment, and integrity. I also understand that no commissioner acts alone. Our effectiveness depends on strong oversight as we work cooperatively with the mayor, council members, Chief of Police, and my fellow commissioners, the Inspector General, and the department, and above all, the people of Los Angeles. I am deeply honored by the opportunity to serve and respectfully ask for your consideration. Thank you and I look forward to any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lee, Councilmember Martinez, Soto Martinez, sorry.
Thank you so much, Council President. Thank you for that great introduction, Councilmember Lee, for setting us up. Mr. Scobin, thank you so much for coming here again and your willingness to serve. And I just want to just, you know, so my colleagues know and the members in the public here know. This is actually the fourth time we're having a conversation and so I appreciate you always making yourself willing to chat and to talk. And I also want to say that I appreciate you being receptive, coming in prepared, and even from in-between meetings, things that we talked about, you looked into them and dug in a little more. And I think that's just a wonderful quality to have as a commissioner, so I want to just acknowledge that and thank that. And, you know, our conversation was short, a Public Safety Committee meeting, and, which is why we had a subsequent follow-up to get more into the technology and the data and everything that happens with LAPD. It's a rather big department and from ALPRs to Fusion Centers. You know, I thought my staff hopefully was able to give you even more information on that. So I want to ask you sort of a similar question that I asked you in Public Safety. So now that you sort of understand the way we, our office is seeing technology and, you know, sort of the fears that we have regarding how it interacts with federal law. and, you know, sort of the fears that we have regarding how it interacts with federal law enforcement, and so would you advocate for stronger safeguards or be willing to open to terminate those contracts if we have no other option, if we find that that data is being shared in the incorrect way to the federal government?
Yeah, thank you. First and foremost, it is crucial that we follow the law. And after doing some research, there are several state laws, city directives, that detail and outline what is allowed and what isn't. You have my commitment to make sure that we are following the law. And in the event that is found that people are not, we have to hold them accountable.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Jeff. And I appreciate you answering that way. It is, definitely makes me very, very happy to hear that. It also makes me happy to say that, you know, you're willing to speak to everybody. And I think you've done that since even beginning this process and being willing to talk to other folks. I know you're going to talk to immigrants' rights organizations. Because, you know, you were here, I think, for the opening testimonial of folks that affected with the ICE raids. And I think, you know, as a councilmember, oftentimes it's a bit difficult to figure out where are you going to focus on and what are the things you want to really, really change. And I imagine you're going to be in that same position. But certainly, the moment that we're in right now, this is the one area that I have carved out to say, you know, we just, we can't not give an inch. We cannot give any, you know, ground to this administration, especially on these issues of immigration and families being torn apart. And so, and hearing your personal story about your own family and your own partners gives me no doubt that you will lead this Commission with that same vigor and that same steadfastness. And so I'm very happy to support your appointment today, and I wish you luck. And I know this is the beginning of many conversations that we're going to have, because if you're doing this because you care about the city and you want the best for the city and all 15 councilmembers, I believe, I feel the same way. And so we look forward to working with you. And I'll be voting a yes, voting a yes on you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez. Councilmember Ramon. Okay, not Councilmember Ramon. All right. So thank you so much. If there are no other comments from the members, we'll open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote. Twelve eyes. Congratulations. We'll see you soon. All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may now proceed to public comment.
All right. We're prepared to proceed to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak at the podium, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment. Members of the public may also speak up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else within the city's subject-matter jurisdiction. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or we cannot tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from the city attorney or the president. At that point, you will need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or you again stray off-topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are items 14 through 32.
I will begin. I will begin by calling the following names: Amy Smith, Giselle Mata, Manuel Mireles,
Hi. Good morning, councilmembers. I'll kick this one off. My name is Amy Smith, and I'm a member of Creed L.A., and we're here to speak about the Harbor Gateway Project and show our support of it. The commitments made by this developer--
Yeah, one minute.
Oh, the commitments made by this developer to ensure that Los Angeles residents benefit from this project from day one and our communities are strengthened and grow is a true sign of a good development project. In a time of economic uncertainty and widespread hardships, Prologis's efforts to put positive force in L.A. is something that we should be welcoming. Prologis has a long history in Southern California and throughout California, and will ensure to create yet another impactful project for our community and for the Southland. We support this project and the many benefits that will come from it, and we ask for your approval of it today. Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hi. I'd like to speak on item number 20, and general comment, please.
You have one minute for each.
Great. Thank you. Hello, my name is Manuel Moreles, and I'm a renter, and I live in Council District Number 14, and I also work with Sage. I strongly urge you to prioritize and allocate $3.7 million in funding for rental assistance and $4.6 million for legal services through the State House L.A. program. Rental assistance and legal services are not just beneficial. They are essential symbiotic services for tenants, whether it's preventative to ensure tenants are not served an eviction notice or defense to defend against an eviction and keep tenants from being unhoused. We urge you to vote yes in favor of L.H.D.'s report recommendations allocating $3.7 million in funding to support rental assistance and $4.6 million in legal services through the State House L.A. program to help your constituents in the city of Los Angeles. Last week, we learned that the RFP has been delayed and threatened once again an interruption in services to tenants in need. State House L.A. is now at risk of running out of enough legal services and rental assistance funds to represent tenants in court as early as November 1st, 2025. That's literally a little more than a week away. Because the RFP process has now been paused, we urge you to extend the State House L.A. contract for an additional five months and fully fund legal services, rental assistance, and outreach and education to avoid any services interruptions that would harm tenants and put them at risk of displacement. In addition, I'm here to urge you to update Larso and urge you to pass Keep L.A. House Coalition demands on Larso that will cap the rent at 3%. Doing this can help that tenants stay housed, especially with all the chaos that ICE is causing in our communities here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Vanessa Johnson, Linus Garfield-Smith, Jose Garcia, Rainey Bishar, and Nick Casey.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I was thinking about something Mr. Groth said yesterday. He scolded a commenter for mentioning Ambassador Garcetti. Later, he scolded a commenter for playing a recording. Neither of these things are prohibited. About the only things that are prohibited are legitimate threats. So why did Mr. Groth say this? I seriously doubt he made up these fake rules. Rather, I suspect he followed instructions from a supervisor. This seems par for the course. The city's legal department is just giving bad advice, and this bad advice is causing massive harm. The police are failing to make required records and to seriously investigate criminal allegations, and these failures are getting people killed. You councilmembers need to distance yourselves from this misconduct, because if you don't, you are the ones who will get blamed. You can't undo the harm that's already occurred, but you can prevent future harm.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Delmar Thompson, I'm speaking. My dog was lioness. He got killed at Ivanburg Park, and I struggled and fought to save him. The person who attacked him never pulled his dog back. And I'm surprised that L.A., with all these pests people have, doesn't have a law in effect that will protect people and give them closure. When a dog kills a dog, he should be put to sleep. This dog is still around, and he's jumping at other people's pets. And I left all my notes. I'm just winging it right now. But I sustained a shoulder injury, had a heart attack, and my neck is cracking. I had major injuries, and the dog is still there. So that's all I'd like to say today. I'll write everything down. I'll be back next week, Monday. But the city council needs to protect people who have pets. And if a dog kills a dog, they need to put that dog asleep immediately.
Thank you, Speaker.
I'm speaking one minute on item number four. Would you allow 340,000-square-foot warehouse with 768 daily trucks parked before your home or apartment? The project site falls within AB 617 boundaries for South Los Angeles. This is an environmental justice area overrun with existing air pollution with the 110 freeway and California waste. The EIR failed to seriously analyze environmental superior alternatives for this project. Please prioritize the needs for those who are already harmed in this area. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
This is general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Nick Casey, pronouns he, they, and I'm a member of the Translantina Coalition's Angels of Change Leadership Academy and a proud resident of District 10. I stand before you today as a queer, trans, Asian immigrant, someone who has fought hard to belong in a world that often tells us we don't. Our TGI community can only become self-sustainable when given real equity, not performative gestures, but access to safe housing, healthcare, legal protections, and fair compensation for our labor. That's why the TGI Equity and Wellness Initiative is vital. For too long, we face discrimination, wage gaps, and violence simply for existing. Yet we continue to rise and lead with resilience and love. When trans and immigrant communities thrive, Los Angeles becomes stronger, more compassionate, and more just for everyone. Thank you.
General public comment. My name is Maya Daniels, pronouns they, them, with the Transatina Coalition. I'm here today with a member who just spoke from our first cohort of our Angels of Change Leadership Academy. The Angels of Change program was started by our organization's CEO, Bambi Salseto, when she worked at the Los Angeles Children's Hospital and provided affordable gender-affirming care to community members. Now, we have taken it back and will continue to lead this work when there is a lack of political will from our peers. We protect our communities from hate crimes. We make sure our folks are housed. We are the first people called for a domestic violence situation. If you don't do anything for the transgender expansive and intersex people within this federal administration, pass the TGI Wellness and Equity Initiative. Fund the organizations that hold the political will to protect our trans and immigrant Angelenos. Do it now, so we can have implemented avenues to provide life-altering services and programs as this federal government cuts funding for programs like EBT, SNAP benefits, and homelessness prevention services. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Maria Ceja.
All right. Y'all already know who I am. I'm the grandmother of all of us. I'm here for the old people.
Welcome. Just a second. I think we're announcing a few more names, and then we'll give you your time. I promise. Hold on, just one second.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. I would like to call up Maria Ceja, Maya Daniels, KJ Smoth, and Andrew Grapener.
Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Okay, I'm doing the general, you know, the one I just did right now. Hey, no matter. What's up?
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Uga Martini, I'm really impressed with you. Also Heather Hunt and Ms. Hernandez, with all your work, have your accomplishment. Boy, y'all been doing some good work. I've also been at the county with all those ladies right here, and I support everything that's been done. I've been in your garden over there at Pico. I loved it. But I'm here for the senior programs, because the seniors need more programs. They're being cut off. This administration wants to cut their food stamps off. Also, they're old. Come on, I'm old too. We're all going to get old. Let's get with the program and help the seniors, the senior transgender community, all of us. We need what we need. We need a lot, a lot going on with this administration. And don't let this man win. And don't listen to this nonsense over here, because we earn our respect. We get our respect, and respect is something you give to get it back. And I give it to you, and I expect you to give it back to me. Thank you, and I love you, and I love, and keep the good work.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? Item four, the Harbor Gate Project. Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name's Jose Garcia. I'm a lifelong member of the Laborers International Union of North America, and we stand here in full support of Prologis's project and ask that you do as well. It's going to bring a lot of life changes for people in the trades and give us the opportunity to deliver you a world-class project before the Olympics. So we urge you to please, please, move this project forward. We have people on the ground waiting to work. With all the uncertainty going on in this world right now, please bring some certainty, a guarantee to us that we have a future here. We need to work. We need to put people here in this city to work now. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, good morning, Mr. Herman, first of all. Second, we've been through this before. In fact, we were going through it yesterday. You do not need to bring all of your stuff up to the podium. If you are requesting an accommodation, then you can do so, and we can provide you with the handheld mic. But you cannot delay this meeting and general public comment. So if you're not ready, then I ask that you please wait and let the next person pass you in line, and then you can go up after them. But this is your first and only formal warning, and I've given it to you before. Please do not disrupt this meeting. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Please start the time.
Thank you for entertaining me with that, you fucking racist. Now into my public speech. Wow. Hey, dog eaters. Look at this item in CD 15 with McCocker. Mr. McCocker over there wants to cut my little doggy's nuts out so that he's sprayed and neutered. Why is that, Mr. McCocker? What's that? It's not true? Well, what if we don't want the goat man's balls cut out? Does that make it spray and neuter in a neuter clinic?
This isn't on the topic. We moved to the next item and reduced it by a minute.
Now, item 27, dickhead, talks about operations at the Animal Service Center. Woof, woof, woof. Right, smoking scan? But they don't care about shelters. They don't care about-- hey, I'm off-topic. I'm talking about shelter. No, bitch. I'm talking about shelter veterinary operation. Got you, bitch. See? So, Los Angeles Animal Service Spray and Neuter Clinic, starting July 1st, 2024, that's out of date, dickhead. So you need to get your fucking programs here set on the correct date. We're in 2025, going into 2026, noodle noodles heads. Then, again, Department of Various Work for Animal Shelter, dickhead. See, I'm still on topic. Why aren't you ruling me off-topic, dickhead?
You're off-topic. Next item.
No, because the long Anderson gift is this: You're still number one. And the $7,510 for salaries and construction, once again, is unconstitutional. People need real money, not fucking salaries. Hey, look at hiring at the hall for construction, $58,000, dickhead. Look at the $25,000 for benefits and hiring and construction, dickhead. Look at $81,000, I count, 003180 for the record, construction materials, you fucking moron. Look at item 29, Animal Service. Woof, 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 woof. You chew like a dog up there, but no one's going to address that right now, because I'm talking about--
You're off-topic.
Shirley Walters Family Trust on behalf of Animal Service, you dog. Woof, 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 woof. Oh, look at number 30, jackass. Communication for the Department of Animal Service. Communication for the Department of Animal Service. Not one motherfucking time have I been off topic. So 42SC 1983 politely fuck you. Now to my general public comment, folks. General public comment regarding the residential constructions for minimum wage, mid-sized residential construction, and yet not one motherfucker in an orange jacket behind me can, can say that he's building and cannot live, right? No, these people build for this fucking city. They build for you fucking wages to live in them, and yet they can't afford a fucking 3,000 beautiful condominium or rental place. That's racist, you fucking Korean. That is fucking racist. And besides, the Koreans that got deported, those 300s by Donald J. Trump, so long assholes. Fuck the Koreans. We need jobs for American people, not for these stealing bitches here illegally in our country, taking away jobs for minimum wages, not receiving benefits, not receiving insurance, because you, groat, are a dickhead. Go get a fucking haircut, you fucking moron piece of shit. Smoking scan!
And your time has expired. To the members of the general public, I really, truly sincerely appreciate your patience. People express themselves in many different ways, some of them more constructive or less constructive than others. I realize he talked a lot about the animal services items. Please do not hold his comments against the Animal Services Department. Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I am speaking on item number 20 in general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Maria Seja, and I work at Sage. We are here to urge you to vote yes in favor of LHD's report recommendations to allocate 3.7 million to support rental assistance and 4.6 million in legal services through the State House LA program to help your constituents in the city of Los Angeles. Last week, we learned that the RFP had been delayed and threatens once again the interruption to necessary tenant services. State House LA is now at risk of running out of enough legal services and rental assistance funds to represent tenants in court as early as November 1st. This puts the most vulnerable LA renters at risk of suffering immediate consequences like displacement and homelessness. Because the RFP process has now been paused, we urge you to extend the State House LA contract for an additional five months and fully fund legal services, rental assistance, and outreach and education to avoid any service interruptions that would harm tenants and put them at risk of displacement. In addition, I am here to urge you to update the, uh, to update Larso and urge you to pass the Keep L.A. Housed Coalition's demands on Larso that will cap the rent at 3%. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number four, Rosely Preston, a pellin, and also resident south of the Redondo Beach Boulevard. This is regarding the Prologis Warehouse. In an environmental justice community with some of the worst air pollution in the country, you are prepared to approve a project that would significantly increase air pollution with up to 768 diesel truck trips per day. Meanwhile, the approval does not include all feasible mitigations for the air quality impacts of this project, such as requiring all transport trucks using this facility to have engines that at least meet 2017 CARB standards or reducing the hours of operation. Many elements of the project conflict with the updated Harbor Gateway Community Plan, which you just approved on September the 9th, as well as South Coast AQMD Guidelines for Truck Routes Near Sensitive Uses and State Attorney General Guidelines for Warehouse Siding. Reconsider your approval.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak to item number nine on the, for the Planning and Use Management Committee's recommendation.
So item number nine's not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Garfield Smith. I'm a resident of Virginia Road, part of the vibrant, respectful, and deeply community-oriented Wellington Square. I am coming to you today seeking your recommendation and approval of the item number nine on the Planning and Use, pardon me, for the Planning and Land Use Committee's, uh, report. The, the item in question relates to a resident's home in that area which has repeatedly had loud late night, late night parties, unleashed dogs that run wildly throughout the neighborhood, reckless drivers crashing into cars, and we are seeking an opportunity to have a respectful community that promotes togetherness. Thank you.
I would like to call up Audit LA and Georgina Serrano.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number nine.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Ronnie Bashar. Council members, I am here before you today to request that we begin proceedings with the nuisance abatement at 2215 Virginia Road. I am here in hopes that I, on behalf of my neighbors and my family, can plead with you to empathize with the tremendous difficulty, heartache, headache, and hours and hours of lost sleep that we neighbors in proximity to 2215 Virginia Road have dealt with since November 2022. I am here to advocate for the legacy, peace of mind, quality of life, and most importantly, safety that my neighbors before me have fought long and hard to achieve for all of us. My commitment to my community and its values have brought me here today to beg you to assist us in ameliorating the excessive early morning and late night noise, drug and alcohol use in the public right of way, dangerous loose dogs terrorizing those of us who walk dogs, blocking driveways in the public right of way with vehicles, vehicle repair in the street, indecent behavior such as urinating on people's private property, endangering pedestrians with driving at excessively high speeds on Virginia Road, and even more egregious acts such as domestic violence in the public right of way with open carry firearms, driving vehicles into and destroying people's public, private, public, people's private property, and running into and severely damaging parked cars on Virginia Road.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Terry Berry and Loretta Lauren Nine.
And before the next speaker begins too. So if you can, once you provide public comment, it's actually easier for you and for everyone else if you can exit to your right-hand side. So you'll enter for public comment on the left, and you will exit on the right. So, good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, good morning. General comment and item number 20.
Item number 20?
Twenty, yeah.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
My name is Georgina Serrano, community organizer within Quilinos Unidos. I'm part of the different coalition, but right to counsel. State House LA program is an instrument for providing support to the tenants and the community. So we can provide legal, uh, legal assistance, rental assistance, education, outreach, and we can avoid and protect the tenants to give them the houses. If we don't have the money, we don't have the funds to support the tenants, we are not doing our job. So I encourage you to take in consideration, we need the funds, and we asking for a five-month extension because we cannot apply for the, and the regular process is closed. We understand why, but what we understand is that community. Community, yep.
Go ahead. Can you start her general public comment? Okay, thank you.
The community need the support. So the community, you be part of the team. The community need you take the right decision for the community, not in the interest of political situation, but in the situation when we, this morning, we see the people crying because don't have the money for pay rent. We count on you, and thank you for your support, the community. Thank you.
I would like to call up Cynthia Gonzalez and Irma Cervantes.
So I don't see anyone come. Oh, a couple more. Okay.
While we're waiting, I would like to call up Matthew Prescott, Anaii, Luke McDonald, and Wendy Hopps.
Hi, good morning.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, can I speak on item 20 in general public comment?
Of course. So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Cynthia Gonzalez. I am a program manager at Eastside Leeds and work for State House LA. I'm here to discuss item number 20. As you can see, there's so many constituents from all over the district here to just speak about how highly important it is to prioritize and allocate the 3.7 million in funding for rental assistance and $4.6 million for legal services to the State House LA program. I can't, I could sit here and tell you guys and share with you guys the data, but really what's more impactful is the work that we do on a daily basis and why a stop or a, a stop to the program is really crucial in the work that we do. There's been so many tenants that have been coming to us that have been facing evictions, a lot of elders, a lot of undocumented people that don't know how they're gonna be paying for rent.
General.
Thank you. So I'm really here to urge everyone listening that we need to make sure that this RFP process that has now been paused extends for the next five months. Again, I cannot, I cannot say and stress how important it is for this program to continue without any pauses. We thank District Four for putting a motion, but we need more time. We need more time, and we need to make sure that there is not a stop to the services that we do, especially for undocumented elders, tenants that live in all of your districts, right? We have a lot of elders that come to us around not having enough social security funding to be able to cover the rent. So it really is up to us, the folks here at State House LA, to be able to maneuver them through services. That is gonna be crucial to ensure that they are not houseless. So please, I urge you to continue this extension. Thank you very much.
Before the next speaker comes up, I would like to call up Ron Hubbard, Grayson Amideo, Jason Baze, Maria Velma, Red Chief, Amy Navarres, Christine Rodriguez, and Tomasa Martinez.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
20 in general.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Luke McDonald. I'm a renter. I live in CD 13, and I'm here to urge city council you all to prioritize and allocate 3.7 million in funding for rental assistance and 4.6 million for legal services through the State House LA program. And these are, I mean, this program needs to continue. This whole fiasco with the funding is causing so much disorder in the way that we're helping tenants to survive in the city at this really challenging moment. I also, we're getting news that the RFP process has been delayed, and we're running out. State House LA is at risk of running out of legal service and rental assistance funds to represent tenants.
General.
And this needs to be, we need an additional five-month extension. It can't be any less than that because then we'll just be back here wasting everyone's time, um, asking for further extensions. So I just urge you all to please fully fund the legal services, the rental assistance, the outreach and the education that we're doing. The service is, interruptions are super, um, they're super chaotic, and they're harming tenants at risk for displacement. And in my last couple of seconds, I also want to urge you all to update Larso, the Larso formula, and please pass the Keep L.A. Housed Coalition Demands capping the rent at 3%. Thank you all.
Good morning, council members. My name is Maria Briones Vielma, and I'm representing ACE. I'm a member of ACE. It's crucial for all of us, our constituents, to keep L.A. House open. We need the funds, not today, not tomorrow, last week, we needed the funds right away. We're going through crucial moments. It was very helpful to us while the COVID, and now we're facing another crisis, and we need those funds. We need to keep the, the people housed. We need to keep the people that are receiving the funds and the help they need to answer their counterparts on, when they go to court. They need the assistance of the attorneys. We need all of that stuff. We need them immediately. Please keep the funding, the funds for L. S. State House, please. We need that now. And also, we need Larso to be agendized as soon as possible. That's another issue that we had been facing for almost a year or over a year. So we need to move those, uh,
General public comment.
Two things. It's really, uh, important for us. We are facing a crisis. A lot of people is losing money because the government funds have been cut. We cannot end up all on the street. We already have enough people on the street. We already have enough homeless, and we need to get the families housed. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number four, Jason Baez with Laborers International Union of North America, here today on behalf of the 25,000 members that reside here in Los Angeles County, who we are in full support of seeing this project move forward. We would like to sincerely thank all city staff for your support in moving this project up to this point. And we would also like to thank Prologis, who has proven time and time again to be a friend of good tidings, opportunity, and economic growth to our city of angels. Us, the laborers, and our brothers from the carpenters are suited, booted, and ready at the gate to build this facility to the very highest standard and level of precision. We would be so very grateful for your support in securing this investment of private money into our community today. Thank you so very much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment, please.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Grayson Amadeo, and I'm a resident in District 10. Under this current administration, many of our communities are experiencing government sanctioned violence. To be clear, the ICE raids we've witnessed, people being literally snatched from their families, these are acts of violence. And it's very disturbing to see too many of my fellow Angelinos plagued by the fear of detainment when all they did was seek asylum. They pursued happiness in the land of the free. So I urge you all to be proactive in protecting our vulnerable constituents so that Los Angeles remains a city where everyone feels safe, everyone feels valued, and everyone is empowered to thrive. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item 20 in general public comment.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. My name is Amy Linda Nevades. I work at Sage and with State House LA. And I want to thank Councilmember Rahman for introducing the amendment, extending our contract. We work with tenants every single day. Folks are often coming to us, asking for rental assistance, asking for legal support, and we provide those services in a time where we're seeing an increase of folks not being able to pay their rent, as we heard some folks share their stories today. I urge you to please vote yes and prioritize the funding for the legal services and rental assistance for the State House LA program. I also urge you to extend our contract not by, by, by five months. We need the full contract so that we cannot be here again in two, three, four months asking for another extension. We understand that the RFP process can take a long time and that people are working hard to make sure that that happens in a timely manner. But we're taking time out of our day, helping tenants to come here and speak to you all about the importance of this. So I, I please urge you to extend the State House LA contract for an additional five months. That's to the end of June 2026, and fully fund That's to the end of June 2026, and fully fund that so that we can continue doing the work that we do and supporting your constituents. It's really important that they have these services and that they know that we're here to help them and that we're not going to turn them away because we don't have enough funding. I also would like to ask you to update Larson and pass the L.A. Keep L.A. Housed Coalition Demands on Larson to cap the rent at 3%. There is an importance in all of these points, and the focus here is the tenants, the residents, your constituents, and that's why we're here, especially for folks who couldn't make it today. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I am speaking on item 20 as well as general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, good morning. My name is Christine Rodriguez. I am a legal assistant for the Los Angeles Center for Community Law and Action, where we provide free legal services for those who have eviction cases. I want to ask you a very important question today. Do you want to aid in the homeless crisis? Do you want to increase the number of families, the number of elderly people who are kicked out of their homes and pushed onto the streets? Without the funding from State House L.A., there will be an increase of folks who are at risk yet homelessness. We urge the City Council to increase the amount of rental assistance as well as the amount of legal services that can be provided through State House L.A. funding. The reason for that is we really want to work to make sure that there is less homelessness here in Los Angeles. Not too far from here, we have the streets of Skid Row, which is already very impacted. We don't need any more people, or areas for that matter, in Los Angeles to be inhabited by people who have been kicked out of their homes due to unable to being able to pay rent or unable to know how to navigate the legal system. At my work, that's what we do. We help people understand how they can fight their eviction cases. Many times before people even come to us, they are desperate and feel hopeless because they have to fight their own eviction case. Many of the organizations with State House L.A., they help people to make sure that their either cases dismissed or that they stay housed. In addition to this, I want to encourage the City Council to increase the amount of time for funding. Two months is a really short amount of time. I'm sure there's always times when we think, oh, October's almost over. That's how we're going to be if we only get two months. We really need five months so that we can keep these services for the constituents of Los Angeles. We need to make sure that we are.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Oh, thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number 20 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Anaya Gonzalez. I am a renter in District 10 and an advocate for economic justice alongside Sage. I am standing before you to ask to please stand with your community and extend the State House L.A. contract for an additional five months, fully funding legal services, fund rental assistance, outreach, and education to avoid any service interruptions that would further harm your constituents and put them in further risk of displacement. And I ask for five months so I'm not back here in two, pleading my case and pleading for my community again. We are all very aware of what's happening outside to the community. Families are being torn apart violently, and because of that, they are facing great times of need. And as you know, this program is an essential service for those tenants. It keeps them educated on the eviction process, offers guides and support in a process not designed for them. It helps to keep them housed. So instead of being on the ground navigating those who need the service, I am here pleading with you to vote yes in favor of what LAHD has already recommended, and that is to prioritize and allocate 3.7 million for rental assistance and 4.6 million for legal services through the State House L.A. program. Last week, we learned that the RFP has been delayed and threatens once again an interruption in those services to those tenants. Are we not embarrassed? Has the community not gone through enough? Stand by us, and please vote for a State House L.A. extension. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
My name is Michael Miller, and I'm speaking for the have-nots, the sinners streets that don't have attorney. I'm an attorney, in fact.
So we'll do one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
And I'm representing those that are in the street. I have pictures I took, spent my money, which is pictures of people sleeping in the streets.
Can you pause this time for a second? So if you have things to pass out after your public comment, you can provide them to the sergeants and they will take them from there. Thank you. Go ahead and start us timing.
So basically, I'm trying to be the lens of society and the community. I represent Spanish and Black. If you look up the Los Angeles Sentinel newspaper as of October of this month, on the 8th and the 9th, I'm on this page number eight, and I expose what they call the Star Chamber. Basically, what the government is doing to people who have not is imposing agendas where they can't afford to pay their rent, and they have people that's in prison for trying to take care of their families. You got women washing themselves with wipes on the street, and I witnessed that. These documents that I've seen and I have, I will provide to you later. And I'm kind of nervous, but hopefully that you get the point.
Thank you. Your time has expired. And again, you can pass, you can, yep, they're coming to get them now. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias. El punto numero 20 y hacer comentario público general.
Morning. Item number 20 and also general public comment as well.
So you'll have one minute for item 20 and then one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Tomasa Martinez. Soy miembro de ACE.
Good day. My name is Martha Gortias, and I am a member of Sage.
Vivo en el distrito 14.
I'm a member of the District 14.
Le insto encarecidamente que den prioridad y asignen tres puntos millones de dólares a la ayuda para el alquiler y cuatro puntos seis millones de dólares a los servicios jurídicos a través del programa State House L.A.
I'm here to ask that you please provide 3.7 million dollars and 4.6 million dollars for State House L.A. programs for legal assistance.
La ayuda para alquiler y los servicios jurídicos no son, no solo son beneficiosos, sino que son servicios simbólicos, esenciales para los inquilinos, ya que sea de esta forma preventiva para garantizar que no se entregue una notificación de desalojo.
These funds will help not only the renters, but they're necessary as legal rights. They are symbolic and essential for the assisting in generating the assistance necessary so that they can get proper notification and not just be served randomly with eviction notice.
He sufrido represalias por parte de la dueña de la vivienda donde estoy, que llevo 15 años viviendo ahí.
I have been the victim of retaliatory measures by the owner of the property that I've lived at for the last 15 years.
Solo porque denuncié que tenía chinchas, cucarachas, y ratones.
Just because I reported that I had bedbugs, mice, and cockroaches in my house.
Que tenían que fumigar. Ahora sufro de acoso porque siempre he pagado mi renta.
They've had to fumigate the place, and now I'm constantly being threatened because I had to pay my rent.
Por tres días consecutivos, la dueña del hogar me, antes me manda mensajes que si cuando le voy a pagar su renta, siendo que yo se le he pagado cada 15 del mes.
For three consecutive days, you would message me, when are you going to pay your rent? When are you going to pay your rent? And I always pay on the 15th of the month.
Me siento muy estresada cuando ella recibe los mensajes hasta mi estómago se revuelve.
I feel super stressed when she messages me, and it even turns my stomach.
Protejan State House L.A. y voten por Larson, por favor. Ya es hora, ya es tiempo. Yo no me quiero quedar en la calle. No quiero estar en la calle porque ni en la calle me van a querer, me van a correr de ahí. Gracias.
Please protect State House L.A. and help us all because I don't want to end up on the street. On the street is not a place for anyone. Not going to be a good place for me.
All right, thank you to all the speakers, and thank you for our translation services. That concludes public comment for this meeting. What's items are before us, Mr. Quirk?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items 14 through 19 and 23 through 32.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item four, held on the desk by Councilmember McCosker, for additional public comment.
Councilmember McCosker. Additional public comments.
No, thank you very much. I just wanted to give the opportunity to the community to speak to that issue, and I'm good to go.
All right, let's open the roll on item number four, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now vote on item 22, called special by Councilmember Nazarian, for a separate vote.
If there are no comments from Council District 2, we'll open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes, one no.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item 20, called special by Councilmember Rahman, for which amended motion 20A, Rahman Bloomfield, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
All right, let's open the roll on this item as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, there's a request to send item 20 forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
The council may now consider item 20, called special by Councilmember Rahman, for comments.
Councilmember Rahman, 21.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I put this motion forward because we are facing what may be an extraordinary funding cliff for homelessness programs here in Los Angeles. Between county shortfalls, potential federal reversals, and state funding decreases and delays, our homelessness response system is potentially staring at a reduction of over $600 million next year, which is an astounding amount. That includes $300 million shortfall for Measure A, threatened cuts from the Trump administration targeting about $220 million of funding for permanent supportive housing that would impact 8,000 units, housing 8,000 households, cuts to state funds under HAP, and deep cuts and delays in their dispersal at a time when we desperately need it, the state actually reduced the amount of funding that they're giving us. This is not abstract. These cuts would impact thousands of units of PSH, hundreds of interim beds, potentially thousands, case management and services, rental subsidies, basically the entire scaffolding that helps keep tens of thousands of Angelinos that we've already worked to house in their current housing. And if we fail to respond, we don't just lose progress, we also risk violating our obligations under the alliance settlement. Our city's investments are going to collapse if we don't act in close partnership with both the county, the state, and the federal government. This motion directs CAO, LAHD, LASSA, and HACLA to come back with a real fiscal picture, what it's going to take to maintain our current investments, the extent of the cuts that we're facing from HAP, ESG, COC, Measure A, and any other at-risk sources, and the potential impact on people, those people who are currently being served by our interim housing and our PSH units, and urges us and pushes our departments to align ourselves much more closely with the county on strategy and compliance and launch a unified federal and state advocacy plan because without it, we are really going to be in dire straits. So I hope that you will support this motion. We can't solve homelessness alone, but we also can't stand still while other people pull funding out from under us. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rahman, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. Let's open the roll on item 21, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. Are there any announcements, members? Any announcements? So members, we're trying to let some documentation on an amendment on 20, item 20, make their way around the horseshoe so we can consider it at this time. And I believe that would be item 22 for members of the public. My apologies, item 22.
Mr. President, so there's a request to reconsider item 22. Is there a motion and a second for this reconsideration?
A move that we, move, is there a second that we reconsider? I believe it's Councilmember Lee. All right. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. What's next?
Mr. President, I believe amended motion for item 22 is being distributed and to be posted on the bulletin board, sir.
All right. So are we prepared to take this item up as amended?
It has yet to be distributed, sir.
Pardon me?
Has yet to be distributed.
It has yet to be distributed. All right. Waiting through distribution of 32 physical pieces of paper. I guess 34 if you conclude, if you include the bulletin board. Modern city of Los Angeles. Mr. City Attorney, if you can read the amendment that may soak up some of the time we're taking to get the piece of paper around the horseshoe. Yes, of course. So for the members of the public and also for the members around the horseshoe, this is largely a technical amendment. It adds an additional instruction, and it deals with the identification of funds. So the additional third request says, request the city administrative officer to identify funding in the amount of $750,000 and transfer that amount to Fund 100, Department Number 12, Account Number 009301, outside council by way of the first financial status report. So it does not change the amount that council had previously voted on before being reconsidered. It's just to identify the funding. All right, has it been distributed? May we take this item up?
And for the record, amended motion 22A, Harris Dawson Lee has been introduced and posted on the bulletin board.
All right, so what's before us?
The council may now vote on item 22, reconsidered as amended by motion 22A, Harris Dawson Lee.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Mr. Nazarian, you were at no vote on this. Councilmember Rahman?
A question about this, which I just want to clarify. A question about this, which I just want to clarify, this is coming from DWP's funding, right?
Councilmember Mike Dundas, City Attorney's Office. No, this would be general fund money.
That's not what it says in the report. That's why this is confusing to us.
In... The report, I think, described--I mean, if you'd like to discuss it, we can talk about it in closed session, I would recommend, but...
I just--I'm just curious about what the--why the change was made, that's all.
Because that-- The majority of the funding, this is an expansion of the existing contract that DWP is paying for, for the defense of the litigation. There's a portion of an amended complaint that also involves allegations against the city generally, not against just DWP.
Against who?
The city of Los Angeles generally, not against DWP. And that's what this is for, is to authorize the general fund dollars to be used in the defense of the litigation as well.
Yeah, this is just--it's just a change from what I understood the original response to be, so thank you, Councilmember Nazarian.
Happy to discuss any details about the change and the causes of action in closed session.
All right, I--if no one else has this question, I don't want to belabor the point, but I--the amendment is at odds with what was in the report, and so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding why we're doing this, but I don't--again, I can just abstain or vote no, whatever.
I think it's important to find out. Councilmember McCosker?
I have the same concern. I did not see this--any of this is coming out of general fund.
All right, so what's the answer to that question?
You need to go into closed--
It's a closed answer, I think.
We have to go into closed session to get an answer?
Well, beyond what I just explained, which is that the causes of action filed against the city that expanded, that, yeah, I would recommend discussing it in closed session.
All right, members, we will go into closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Sorry--
So for members of the public, if you could please exit expeditiously, that includes you, Mr. Herman, and I would remind you as a courtesy, you have already been warned. So we are not in recess. We are trying to go into closed session, so please exit so that we can do so. Thank you.
Mayor Karen Bass encourages local small business owners and entrepreneurs to apply for the city's contract financing program. The program provides an opportunity for local small businesses to better understand the steps needed to be a city contractor. Through the partnership with Bank of California, $1 million in funding was provided to establish and facilitate the program. With this initiative, small business owners can secure competitive loans to help fund materials and equipment. For more information, go to mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Los Angeles City Planning's Office of Historic Resources is announcing the launch of Historic Places L.A. Revealed Latino Los Angeles. The Office of Historic Resources is looking to select sites that reflect the Latino community and heritage around Los Angeles. Markers will be installed at over 100 sites, creating the opportunity for community engagement at these historic places. An online survey is available for Angelenos to share locations they believe hold Latino heritage that should be recognized. For more information, visit Planning for L.A. on Facebook or Instagram. Councilmember Eunice Hernandez announced new data showing evictions in her district have declined, dropping 10% in the last two years. Citing a new precedent for citywide accountability, Hernandez has secured the first-ever administrative citation against an abusive landlord. The Highland Park landlord was fined for violations that included unauthorized entries, false permit filings, and armed guards sent to intimidate families. Hernandez said that her office has distributed more than $100,000 in rental assistance in the past year, and staff are dedicated to helping tenants with eviction notices. For more information, visit the Press Releases tab at cityone.lacity.gov.
Your regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAPD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C, compress. If the injury is to the leg or arm, prepare to use the tourniquet. Unwrap the tourniquet and apply it two to three inches above the wound. Do not place the tourniquet onto a joint. Go above the joint if necessary. Pull the free end of the tourniquet and wrap it until it is tight. Wind the winelass until the bleeding stops. Secure the winelass in place. Note the time the tourniquet was applied and write it down, if you can, or tell first responders when they arrive.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment, a marriage between a calling and a lifestyle, a decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice, no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD, unrivaled since 1869.
The Lancashire Arts Center was constructed in 1939. When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a L.A. Department of Water and Power building. The city of L.A. became the owner of the Lancashire Arts Center when it was declared as a historical cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like five or six o'clock, there's like lighting panels that will turn on, and then you get to see the full kind of marquee of the Lancashire Arts Center. We host a bevy of productions, be it dance productions, music productions, sometimes we'll have a film screening. Art, I think that sort of flexibility is something that brings me back every time. The theater is very intimate here. It really feels like you're just right up in front of the talent when you come watch a show here. We also do youth programming here. We work with different local artists to be able to provide free programming for children to learn how to sew. We have a fashion class. We have music classes specifically for percussion and drums. We also have another music class for piano. And then we also have a dance studio. It's in our mezzanine. That is for our dance class that we have here. Our mission here is just to grow the performing arts, really. So whether it be someone trying to bring out their own original productions, or like sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes, being able to grow the performing arts in a community is what makes Lancashire Arts Center stand out. The city investing into places like this is because it gives a place for people that were not as confident, the ability to express themselves, and give a space for people that are a little bit different, another space to play, because being able to play is-- Because being able to play is so important just for our mental health, as well as for the health of the community, and it just makes the world a better place. We look forward to having you here at Lancashire Arts Center, whether it be taking part in our free programming, as well as being able to come and just watch a movie or watch a show. We look forward to having you over here. On Instagram, our Instagram handle is DCA underscore LNK. You can also find out more about us on culture.lacity.gov. That's our website.
The Tosco Theater is located in Canoga Park. There is so much already here to offer, cultural events, performances, folks do annual Dia de los Muertos festivals, there is art walks, there is musical events, there's jazz, and I feel like we have the privilege to be added in that offering. The space had been left a little bit weary, and so when the city came in to renovate the space, it was offered another chance to breathe new life into the arts here. The Tosco Theater is here for everyone. It is here for young artists who are just starting out, to the professional artists who are here to dream up their new vision, and we're here for the community at large at all of our community events. One of our signature events is called Walking in Our Light. This idea of how we help people to encourage them to think about the light that they bring and to show appreciation for those who helped nurture that light. So from that idea, we thought, well, let's walk in our light. Let us have stories along the way where people can stop and hear performances and storytelling of other people saying, this is my light, this is how I shine it, and these are the people I want to show appreciation to. So we do this walk around the block, and then we end up with a little gathering, performances inside, and lots of time to just reflect on, yeah, this is my light, you know, and these are the people who've helped me get there. Our communities don't always see what the city of Los Angeles provides them, providing access to the arts. Says to me, that's a city that's proud of the stories it wants to tell, the people who want to tell them, and the ways that they want to tell them. A space like this gives opportunity for folks of all ages, cultures, experience, to say, I can be seen, I can be heard, and I'm walking in these doors, and it feels welcoming, it feels nurturing, and people are excited to listen to me and to hear me. We don't have that all the time. So it's a live space that's here to welcome and nurture those sparks of inspiration and There's a few ways to find us. We are always on social media, so we are on Instagram. We have a Facebook page. You can go to the Department of Cultural Affairs, their website, you'll find the Tosco Theater. It may take a few clicks here and there, but we try to stay present in any way that we can.
Getting the MyLA311 app is easy. Download the MyLA311 app from the App Store or Google Play. Use Google Translate to view the page in up to 200 languages. Select the service need, either by typing a topic in the new request search box, or select from the most popular service requests, like street pavement issues or potholes. Answer a few questions, you can add a comment, or even upload a picture. Keep track of your request via email, text, or create an Angeleno account to become a registered user. Using MyLA311 keeps our city safe and clean.
Mr. City Attorney?
And if I may, sir, call the roll.
Yes, please. Sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bloomingfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Hurado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto, Martinez, Jaroslawski, 12 members present in the corner, Mr. President.
And, Mr. President, there is nothing to announce for closed session or from closed session, as a matter of, just to clarify sort of where we're at in this, there was, prior to going into closed session, a motion to reconsider the item so that an amendment could be heard. That amendment reads as follows. It says it adds an additional third instruction that requests the city administrative officer to identify funding in the amount of $750,000 and transfer that amount to fund 100, Department Number 12, Account Number 009301, outside council by the way of the First Financial Status Report. As said earlier to the public, the dollar amount that was initially approved before the motion reconsidered is the same. This requests the city administrative officer to identify the funding.
Right, thank you. And I'll just editorialize a little bit. The dollar amount is the same, but the source of the dollars is different, which causes a dramatic difference. And, you know, I just want to say, on the public record, we got both a report and a motion that identified these funds as coming back from, coming from DWP, as Council Member Roman pointed out before we went into closed session. We got a request after the motion had already been brought before the council for this additional language from the city attorney's office. So I just want to, one, say to members, there is understandable consternation on this. We should, I don't understand why this was not known when we first got, when the report was issued, and then when the motion was introduced. I don't understand why this wasn't known until literally the last hour, but that's where we are. Mr. McCosker.
Just for clarity, then, motion, it's, we, the matter is in front of us for reconsideration. A no vote has the effect of removing that $750,000 from the general fund and putting it back, or does it have the effect of denying the entire matter?
So I think there was an amendment, and I think originally we're going to take the amendment and the item up together. They could certainly be bifurcated and taken separately if council wants to approve the $750,000, but there would be no identification of where the funds are coming from.
Well, I just want to give effect to the president's observation that all of the money in, as reported to us, and as our expectation, is, you know, coming from DWP funds. And so if that means we have to bifurcate and vote, if, for me, if that means we have to bifurcate and vote no on this amendment number, this amendment in front of us, I'm willing to do that, and then vote yes on the underlying matter. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I think I understand what you're saying, but I think the practical effect of doing so, if no funds are identified, I don't know that the approval would actually have any meaning to it. One option that council always has on these items is if we're seeking clarity, you could always seek to continue it to a different date as well, in its entirety with the amendment.
All right, seeing no other comments, let's open the roll on reconsideration.
Mr. President, the item has already been reconsidered.
Okay.
And the matter before council is Item 22, which is a communication from the city attorney relative to a proposed legal services agreement with Munger, Tolz, and Olson LLP for legal services related to January 2025 welfare litigation. Item, amending motion 22A, Harris, Dawson, Lee, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board. If the council wishes to vote on the item as amended, that can happen at this time, sir.
All right, let's open on the roll on this item as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
All right, this motion fails.
Mr. President, this item will be held over to Friday, October 24, 2025 pursuant to the council rules.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions proposing a referral, sir.
Councilmember Roman.
There was an error in the amendment that I submitted for Item 20A, and I just wondered whether we might be able to reconsider Item 20 as amended with a change to the amendment.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
Is there a second to reconsider Item 20?
Thank you. Sorry, guys. I feel like I've been... Do you want the new language?
Sure, let's read it into the record.
So the 20A, the amending motion needs to read instead, instead, be amended to replace Recommendation A with the following recommendation. The original, the original language was adopt the following additional recommendation. So we're replacing it by saying be amended to replace Recommendation A with the following recommendation. I'm so sorry, colleagues.
And is there a second to this amending motion, to the amending motion?
Councilmember Jaroslawski, second it.
Mr. President, the council may now reconsider Item 20.
All right, let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may not consider Item 20 as amended by amending motion 28 as amended.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions proposing a referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear, sir.
All right. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, you're on the queue for some reason. No? All right, I think there are no announcements, so we'll go to adjourning motions. I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. Any adjourning motions to my left? Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. Colleagues, today I'd like to adjourn our meeting in a little bit of an orthodox fashion for two couples who I've never had the privilege of meeting. I want to adjourn today's meeting in honor of Ronald and Connie Gray, who passed away in December of 11, and then recently in February 2025, and Marvin and Cheryl Walters, who passed away in November 2024 and 2019. If their name sounds familiar, it's because on today's agenda, we accepted their requested donations to the West Valley Animal Service Center. They both shared, both couples shared a passion for animals and a desire to help our shelter system, and I wanted to acknowledge them through this adjournment. Their gifts will continue to do what the Grays and Walters families did best while on this earth and thereafter, their being selfless, giving back to the community, and caring for those who are voiceless. So I hope that the, both couples can rest in peace, knowing that their donations will be put to good use by our animal shelters.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bloomingfield. Any other adjourning motions on the right? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
For more information, go to mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Los Angeles City Planning's Office of Historic Resources is announcing the launch of Historic Places L.A. Revealed Latino Los Angeles. The Office of Historic Resources is looking to select sites that reflect the Latino community and heritage around Los Angeles. Markers will be installed at over 100 sites, creating the opportunity for community engagement at these historic places. An online survey is available for Angelenos to share locations they believe hold Latino heritage that should be recognized. For more information, visit Planning for L.A. on Facebook or Instagram. Councilmember Eunice Hernandez announced new data showing evictions in her district have declined, dropping 10% in the last two years. Citing a new precedent for citywide accountability, Hernandez has secured the first-ever administrative citation against an abusive landlord. The Highland Park landlord was fined for violations that included unauthorized entries, false permit filings, and armed guards sent to intimidate families. Hernandez said that her office has distributed more than $100,000 in rental assistance in the past year, and staff are dedicated to helping tenants with eviction notices. For more information, visit the Press Releases tab at cityone.lacity.gov.
Now, in its eighth year, the annual Reseda Rising Art Walk uses Sherman Way as a backdrop for performances and art. A nighttime stroll reveals dancers and interactive art lighting up the neighborhood. Let's take a look.
Well, today is the Reseda Rising Art Walk. It's an annual festival. We started a number of years ago. It's our eighth time doing it, and it's a place where we get to bring community together to celebrate Reseda and the artistic community that's here, to sort of lean into the art that is a part of the backbone of Reseda, where people are doing performances, painting, live interactive exhibits, music, food, concessions, all sorts of exciting, fun things for the family.
What brought me to the festival is to spend like time with my family, quality of time, and to see some other arts going around and, yeah, get to know new people, to new cultures.
Making my art is how I say I love you to the world, and when a bunch of other like-minded individuals can come out to our local community and do that, it's just a bunch of people saying I love you to each other, to everybody, and that works for me.
That's why we're here at Reseda Rising, to celebrate community. Reseda's been my home since eight years old. My brother went to high school here, and my mom lives down the street, so it's just great to be outside and see, you know, my community and our common thread of art and creativity.
It's good to bond with the family, to walk, and to know what is around here, you know? They have shown new projects that are going to be around too, so I like that.
Art events like these are important because otherwise, there's Etsy, there's Shopify, but those are kind of dispassionate. But, you know, here, when I come out to these events, I see people that I know, people that maybe I haven't seen for a while. It's like, hey, you know, actually just the booth across from me is someone that I know that I haven't seen for a good while and it allows for reconnecting, especially after several years of not being able to connect with people.
It's music and arts here at the Art Walk, but really, it's all about economic development. It's about taking this area and giving it the support that it needs and to invest in Reseda and to transform it to not just be what it was before, but to be something new and special and really great for Reseda. And we are seeing that unfold in front of us through this festival, but through all the investments, and Reseda is rising.
Would you dare go into the water? Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez hosted a celebration at Hanson Dam for the 50th anniversary of Jaws, the movie that dug its teeth into audiences and never let go.
Today, we're here at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center where we are screening and celebrating the 50th anniversary of the release of Jaws. That movie was so iconic for so many of us growing up. It's kind of fun to bring it back and commemorate the first screening that I had here at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, which was Jaws back in 2018.
We have foot trucks, we have a DJ, we have so many activities in the water, we have the water slide, and it's a free event.
With so many families struggling financially, these are opportunities that allow families to come together with their neighbors, and we get thousands of people that come out. It's not just the movie. It's using one of our community amenities and really having a wonderful time, making memories that will last a lifetime. So I'm really happy that we're able to offer these types of events that bring families together, that are in our own neighborhoods, they can do it right here in their own backyard.
This is like the best pool, because it's one of the biggest pools like in L.A. area. It has so much space, it could accommodate so many people. I just really like this pool.
So it was a really good summer, people came in, they felt safe. The lifecars, like these two right here and everybody else, they do an amazing job making sure that everybody's safe in and out of the water. Right here in City 7, we do our best to provide an excellent service to the community.